Please. Thank you. We have a motion to be made for absence. We have a motion by Commissioner McGlaughlin that we excuse Commissioner White and Commissioner Coulson. Second by Benja Holloman. Vote please. Let's stand for invocation. By Commissioner Ward.
Most gracious heavenly Father, please be with us tonight. Be with all the world actually, dear Lord, and guide us through these next few days, years, and months, and help us to make this world a better place to live in. Amen.
In every room. We now have the Pledge of Allegiance by our guest presenter. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Kennedy Roach. I am a rising senior. I attend the school Innovation Early College. A couple of organizations that I'm a part of is Health Science Academy, Carolina Therapy Connection, Health Policies, Event Committee, SGA, and Yearbook Staff. At this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And they say it. Thank you. And thank you. Motion for agenda.
Motion for agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Nunley, second by Commissioner McGlaughlin, that the agenda be approved. Let's vote please. Approved. County manager has...
Madam Chair, you have no one signed up for public addresses to the board.
Thank you. We are now at item number seven on our agenda, public hearing. Let's stick Eli Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Eli with Pitt County Police Department, here to present on another road name change on the other part of Farmville for NC 121 at the Wesley Church Road. So NC DOT has rerouted 121 in Farmville all over town, and so on the other side of town where it turns into Wesley Church Road and terminates at 587 interchange. So we want the road name changed as needed to avoid confusion for non-onone response. So this is actually coming out of Farmville off of North Main Street going all the way up to Wesley Church Road intersection. So we solicit comments from emergency management and town of Farmville, and we're recommending the following road name change, that we continue the name of North Main Street coming out of Farmville to that intersection. There's about 60 homes that would be affected through this address change if it goes through. So after the public hearing, that's what we're recommending is just continuing to name the North Main Street to Wesley Church Road.
The next... We are now closed for public hearing. Declare public hearing. Anyone here who would like to speak, just in case? Oh, please come forward.
Yes.
Yes. What was that?
I said never mind, I'm sorry.
He didn't want to speak for this.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. No one here to speak. We are now declaring the public hearing closed. Uh, the board, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Say it.
Then motion by Commissioner McGlaughlin, second by Commissioner Holloman. Let's vote. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the manager's report.
A few items to report to you this evening. Your next meeting dates June 6th and June 26th, as well as July 17th, all at 6:00 PM in this auditorium. June 6th will be your public hearing on the budget tomorrow evening. Next item, you have a Pitt County opioid roundtable discussion that will take place next Monday, June 12th, from 3:30 to 4:30 in the Mark W. Owens Auditorium at the Ag Center. That's an opportunity Attorney General Josh Stein has chosen Pitt County for his next roundtable discussion on opioid funding, and I would strongly encourage each of you to attend that event, and any member of the public who is interested in learning more about opioid and the settlement and the Attorney General's involvement in that is welcome to attend on June 12th at 3:30. Your third item is to announce the Pitt County Regional Economic Development Summit, which will take place on June 21st from 9:30 to 12:30 in the Mark Owens Auditorium at the Ag Center. That is an event where leaders from the 29 counties in the eastern region will come together to discuss opportunities and challenges within economic development. This was an initiative of your chairwoman, Mary Perkins-Williams. It is an event that requires registration to attend, so if anybody has, would like to register to attend, please contact the clerk to the board, and that event will take place that Wednesday morning from 9:30 to 12:30. There'll be a continental breakfast and a box lunch following, which is why registration is required. Then I had two items of follow-up. At your last meeting, at your May 15th board meeting, the first one has to do with the firearms committee. Harry Teal addressed the Board of Commissioners at your last meeting about firearms and shootings, and after that address, the board asked, at the suggestion of Tom Coulson, that I bring back the history on this board's consideration of regulating shooting in the county. So due to prior complaints regarding shooting in the county similar to the issues that Mr. Teal had raised, the board considered an item for discussion on these items last on October 19th, 2020. The board asked staff to research the issues and the legalities, which they did, and staff reported back on December 21st, 2020. At that meeting, the board formed a firearms committee, and it consisted of representatives from the county commissioners, Tom Coulson was on that committee, staff, Scott Elliott as manager, I as county attorney, and others, the sheriff's office, and members of, from the community. That committee was formed to address whether or not there were any recommended regulations to address shooting within the county, unincorporated parts of the county. That committee recommended that an ordinance, they recommended an ordinance be enacted that regulated where people can discharge firearms in relation to homes or other structures. They said, we set a public hearing on that proposed ordinance, April 19th, 2021. Leading up to April 19th, 2021, there was overwhelming public opposition to any sort of regulation of firearms in the unincorporated parts of the county, and consideration of that ordinance was removed from the agenda that evening on April 19th. So that's the history. The concerns that are raised are the same. That's what this board did in 2020 and 2021, and so if the board would like to readdress shooting in the county, any commissioner at any time can request that it be added as an item for discussion on the agenda, but I wanted the full board to be aware of that history in response to the most recent public address. There's no questions on that. I also wanted to report back to you on open burning. Also at your May 15th, 2023 board meeting, Brad Evans addressed the board on behalf of himself and his neighborhood about open burning in the county, and he suggested that we take a look at the wording in the county ordinance, and he suggested that we consider revision. So I met with Randy Gentry, our emergency management director, and Matt Gibson, your interim county attorney. The three of us also met again with Brad Evans in person last Thursday. As a result of our research and that meeting, bottom line is I'm not recommending a change to the wording of the ordinance at this time unless the board desires to limit open burning within the county. So the ordinance currently allows a person in the county to burn vegetative debris, so leaves, tree branches, yard trimmings, that are gathered from their own yard on their own property. To do that, the ordinance requires that you have to be at least 50 feet away from another structure, right? So you can't be any closer than 50 feet to your neighbor's house, but not more than 100 feet from your occupied residence if you are burning. In part, and that's really for two reasons. One, your common sense reason is you need to get a hose there to be able to pull it out if you need to. The second is because beyond that 100 feet, it goes into the jurisdiction of the North Carolina Forestry Service and not Pitt County Emergency Management anymore. So that's where that came from. To read the wording, I see how Brad Evans and his neighbors would be confused, but after we looked at it together, that's what the ordinance provides. It also matches the language. It draws down that same awkward language is in the general statutes, and so it draws down the language from the general statutes into the county ordinance as it relates to burning. So if the board, if you're comfortable with that distance, then there are no changes that are needed. You can't extend the 100 feet, that's outside your jurisdiction. What you could do, if the board so desired, would be to make larger that 50 foot from another structure, and I think that would be something that Brad Evans would like the board to see, would like the board to consider. And what he said was if the board would like to extend that 50-foot distance to address the concerns in more densely populated neighborhoods, if you wanted to do that, you would need to direct staff into what that distance would be, and we could bring you back an ordinance revised. Note though, that in some densely populated neighborhoods within the county, increasing that 50-foot distance will essentially make it so that they can't burn on their property. So you'll have people who will be distanced out of the ability to burn their yard waste on their own property. Any change to the ordinance does require a public hearing before you can adopt it, and so if you keep it the same, I don't recommend any changes, and I believe Brad Evans understands the language of the ordinance, how it got there, and what it means. If this board is inclined to require people to burn greater than 50 feet from their neighbor's house, any commissioner at any time can ask that this be put on for an item for discussion. We can look at the ordinance, take direction from the board, and bring it back for public hearing. And I'll pause there if there's anything that you, any direction you want to provide.
Any instructions, Commissioner Nunley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question about, did you all discuss what defining principles would govern what is condensed or sufficiently, I guess, development?
Densely populated.
Densely populated, yeah.
Yeah, so loosely, we discussed that densely populated would be such that if you were burning within 50 feet, the smoke could be of an annoyance to your neighbor, right? And so where Brad Evans' neighborhood is, it backs up close to Camelot subdivision. Those homes are closer together, and so Camelot, for example, would be a densely populated neighborhood, and Holly Hills, I think it is, and I might have that name wrong, would back up to, would be densely populated.
And just, just as a follow-up, do our nuisance, do state nuisance laws apply so that if, in the event that they were occurring on sufficient duration and quantity that they became public nuisance, there would still be an action, that it could be brought outside of anything that we would do?
Yes, and better than that, it's particular within our burning ordinance. So the requirements to burn on your property, it has to be your own yard waste, it has to be on your property, it has to be within those distances, and our ordinance says, and it cannot create a nuisance.
Okay.
So if a homeowner believes that a fire is creating a nuisance, and that happens from time to time, they need to call emergency management. We have fire folks on call 24/7, and they can go out and inspect and make sure all the regulations are being followed, and can also provide education on, on the nuisance.
So we still have a mechanism?
We do. You have a mechanism within your ordinance and also within state law.
Okay.
Any more questions? Next item.
And then the last thing I have to report on is a good news item. This is the Duke Energy Resilience Accelerator Grant, another culmination of some good work, primarily coming out of our planning department. Duke Energy has awarded $65,000 in a resilience accelerator grant to expedite a Pitt County project included in the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency's recently published regional resilience portfolios. The funding that we'll receive will be used for data collection and planning activities to produce a shovel-ready plan for stormwater and wetland restoration improvements along Parker's Creek, which is behind or near the county office park. The county will partner, this is a partnership with Carolina Wetlands Association and SWCA Environmental Constance to develop the plan over the next two years. So great news that we were able to apply for and receive $65,000 to improve stormwater and wetland restoration along Parker's Creek, right here in Pitt County. This is the result of, we received lots of emails about different opportunities. I appreciate it when the board receives them, they forward them on, we send them to the appropriate folks, we jump on them, we apply, and this one, we won. So appreciative of those efforts, and will continue to keep the board advised as this progresses.
Parker's Creek is that one over there by Muffet Road?
Correct. Yes.
Madam Chair. Next.
I just want to back up to Madam Manager, to the firearms committee. Now, we're not making any changes, we're not doing anything with that, is that my understanding?
Unless the board wants to discuss it at a future agenda and provide direction, I'm not recommending any changes at this time.
But...
But you could.
Yeah, well, Mr. Teal came and talked about the...
Then needs to be something. My concern is in heavily populated, dense area where there are homes, and the, it happened very recently after he appeared here, there was shooting in a heavily populated area, and the person was shooting towards the water plant, and I wanted to be on record that, and it, the bullets was quite lengthy, and the, I was concerned that the bullet would have gone even farther than ordinary, and I don't know who's in the water plant operation on over the road after five, in the late afternoon, but a lot of the residents in that area were complaining, and I did get a public, some calls about it. So I do know that there is some concern.
And this board does have the legal authority to regulate shooting in the county if you choose to, and as a result of that committee, you have a draft ordinance that's presented that limits shooting within a certain distance from homes or other structures. If you'd like, I can provide that, all of that committee work in your next weekly information packet, and then if the board wants to review that more carefully, and then any board member can ask the chairman or the clerk to the board to add it to an agenda as an item for discussion.
Okay, is that good enough? There was a young man out in the area, he fell on the ground and was crawling, he really was concerned about that. So certain bullets can reach a certain distance, and maybe we should at least look at that.
We absolutely can, and most of the work has already been done, and this board is not bound by any action of a prior board, so you can always look at it fresh. I'll get you that data to look at in black and white in your weekly information packet, and then anyone can just add it if you'd like.
Yes. Thank you. Anything else with the manager? Item for consent, motion? Motion by Commissioner Huggins to approve, second by Commissioner Nunley. Let's vote please. Item for consent has been approved. Item for decision, item number one for decision, James Rose, Mr. Rose.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have one zoning-related item for your consideration tonight, and this is not a new one, this is the fourth request for a time extension for this particular use, and it is for a solar farm, or what's known in our zoning ordinance as a solar energy facility. So we'll just go with a solar farm tonight. This is, this particular site straddles the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bethel, and a portion of the property flows into Pitt County zoning jurisdiction, so two different planning jurisdictions involved. The town of Bethel, their permit runs in perpetuity at this point in time. Ours has a six-month deadline, and there's a lot of reasons that's in place, but with this, this board considered this use when it was still considered as a special use permit, and that has changed with guidance of our former county attorney. But during this interim period, there have been three extensions to date. This fourth extension request is for the same express purpose, six-month extension because the line has to be rebuilt before the utility commission will actually authorize the construction of this particular site. Again, to orient you a bit, this is on the east side of the town of Bethel, so you can see several parcels that straddle the extraterritorial jurisdiction for the town. It's going to be quite a large site, close to 900 acres in total, but these hatched areas are those parcels that are within the county's jurisdiction. There are three criteria that we consider each time we look at this extension request. Number one, has the permit expired yet? It has not, it runs until July the 11th. Has this group proceeded with due diligence and in good faith? Staff believes that to be the case. Again, they're working diligently on some other items and waiting for this line to be rebuilt. And have any of the conditions changed? We believe they have not. At this point in time, we would recommend, from the staff's perspective, and another extension of six months, this would lead us until January 11th of 2024. And with that, Madam Chair, our motions on the screen and our recommendation has been presented, so be glad to address any questions you have.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to accept the request.
Motion by, you were talking about, the motion by Commissioner Nunley that we approve the request, but, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, let's vote please. Motion passed.
Madam Chair, James, can I ask some questions? I know it's okay after I saw the motion and I voted for them. Does this have to come to us every six months?
Every six months.
Okay. All right, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to say good afternoon to NC House Representative Gloria Stine Brown, who's has joined us. We happy to have you. Thank you for joining us. Next item on the agenda is sale of county-owned properties.
Good evening, Madam Chair, commissioners, Madam Manager. Tonight I bring you an item for decision on the sale of three county-owned properties. These properties are 520 Shepherd Street, 1206 Battle Street, and 1,000 Mortal Street. On March 20th, 2023, the board voted to place these parcels on gut deals. In doing so, the county received bids on all three properties. We received $1,401 on 520 Shepherd Street, and this parcel has a tax value of $1,375. We received 3,681 dollars on 1206 Battle Street. It has a tax value of $3,681.
How much was that?
$3,681. The bid and the tax value. On the third parcel, we received $2,888 on Mortal Street, and Mortal Street has a tax value of $2,863. Tonight, the board can accept these offers and place these properties on the tax roll, or you can reject these bids and re-advertise. I'm happy to answer any questions on these parcels. If not, it's my recommendation for the board to accept these offers and authorize the chairwoman to sign the deeds to transfer the properties.
Question?
I have a question. You know, I read that these properties, they're vacant lots, and they're not large enough to build on, so what, what are they going to do with them?
We don't care.
That's just, I mean, I just wondered.
Sometimes a neighbor will purchase it. I don't believe that's the case in this situation, but sometimes a neighbor will purchase it to make their yard bigger. Sometimes an investor may purchase it sight unseen and hold on to it as just an asset in their portfolio, even if it's non-buildable. Sometimes people like to buy it so that it doesn't get built on, but they will be required to pay taxes on those properties that we're not getting now.
What is your pleasure, board members? Motion from Commissioner Holloman?
Second it.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Let's vote please. Item number three, Mr. Demery. Did I see him?
I have not, Mr. Demery.
All right.
Mr. Demery is actually at the school board meeting, I believe, giving an update on the trash campaign, so he couldn't be here this need, but I told him I'd take care of it for him, so it's good to see all y'all. This is for a contract to install a diesel fuel tank out at Solid Waste. Just a little historical perspective on this project, years ago, we partnered with emergency management and former manager Scott Elliott to determine how best to prepare the county for any gas shortages or emergency situations where fuel could be at a premium. And so having discussions with that group, we came up with a plan to install two different types of fuel tanks that could be utilized regularly by our staff in certain operations, and then also be used when needed by all of the county and its folks that use those type of, those types of fuels during those situations. So as part of our sheriff's administrative building project, we have included a regular fuel tank, which will be installed at the rear of that property, that the sheriff's folks in their cars can utilize all the time. We'll have the same card swipe system as we have for other vehicles within our fleet. It'll be tied back into that system so we can still manage those vehicles just like we do currently. Again, that could be utilized by all county vehicles in the fleet that use regular fuel in those emergency situations. Then the diesel side is what we're approving tonight. This is a contract for a diesel fuel tank to be installed out at Solid Waste that Solid Waste and Recycling can utilize for a lot of their heavy trucks and equipment that they utilize at the site. They can utilize and rotate that fuel like it needs to be done during regular business times, and then when we have those emergency situations, it could be used for fire trucks, other things that need that diesel fuel. So feel like we have a good plan in place moving forward to prepare the county for those types of situations. Tonight is approval of the diesel tank at the Solid Waste and Recycling Facility. It's actually the same group that will install the, the regular fuel tank at the sheriff's office, so we feel like we've got a good group that knows what we want. We did put this out for informal bids, and they were our low bidder. The low bidder was First Petroleum Services. Their bid was $134,199.37. We're going to place a 20% contingency on this project, just because of the unknowns of this type of project, just to make sure we don't have to come back to the board for change orders or anything as we move forward through the project. We'll do our best not to have to utilize any of those funds, but just in case, we'll have those available. So that brings the total cost to $161,039.24. So tonight, we're asking for approval for this contract to move forward and authorize the county manager to sign the contract.
What is your pleasure, board members?
I make a motion that we approve, approve this and allow the county manager to do it.
Motion by Commissioner Ward that we approve this recommendation. Motion by Commissioner Ward that we approve this recommendation.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Huggins, and let's vote, please.
Madam Manager, we don't even, um, this was in budget, right?
Yes, this was already budgeted.
Already, many is already.
Yep, thank you.
Next item.
Um, your next item is, um, it has been recommended to appoint Ms. Sharon Rochelle to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council as the DSS Director Representative with a term expiring December 31st, 2023.
So move. Thank you, this is a position set up for the Director of Social Services. It's been motioned by Commissioner Huggins, second by Commissioner McLawhorn. Let's vote, please. Motion passed, Madam Clerk. Next item, appointment to the Grimeson Board of Adjustment.
It is suggested that you appoint Mr. James Chitman to the Grimeson Board of Adjustment with a term expiring June 5th, 2026.
Pleasure of the board?
I say move.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Holloman. Let's vote. Motion passed, Madam Clerk. Item number six, appointment to the Mid East Rural Planning Organization.
And it is being suggested that you appoint Kathy Parker for a one-year term expiring June 5th, 2024 to the Mid East Rural Planning Organization. And there's, um, this one's a little different than your typical appointment. Um, your summary of information in your packet explains, um, that this is typically a municipal appointment. But when it, the, when that fails to happen, then the Board of Commissioners make the appointment, and it's being suggested that Kathy Parker in the town of Fountain, Mayor of Fountain, um, serve in that position.
Pleasure of the board, please.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Huggins, second by Commissioner Ward. Let's vote. Motion passed, Madam Clerk. We will now have comments from the board members. We'll start with Commissioner Smith.
No comments.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
No comment.
Commissioner Huggins?
No comment.
Commissioner Nunnally?
No comment.
Commissioner Holloman? Commissioner Ward?
No comment.
Uh, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, Madam Chair.
In interim, could you take us into closed session?
Yes, Madam Chair. It has been suggested, or will be suggested, this body go into closed session under the following grounds. One, to discuss personnel matter under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A6. Two, to consult with an attorney employee to retain about the public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A3, which privilege hereby acknowledged. Three, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries under North Carolina General Statutes 143, 31811A4. And finally, number four, to prevent the disclosure of information that is not considered a public record under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31810.
Before we go into closed sessions, uh, North Carolina House of Representative Ms. Brown, would you come to the podium if you'd like to have something to say? It's unusual that we have a, a legislative member to join us on re, uh, just an ordinary day. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the board members. I did not come, come prepared to say anything, but I just want to say thank you all for what you're doing. And, uh, it was a pleasure seeing everyone that were at the, uh, associate, the advocacy, county advocacy, uh, social. So I just want to say, uh, just keep praying for me, please.
You need it. Thank you so very much. We will now, uh, clear the stage for closed session. And then pass, we need.
Second it.
Okay. Motion by Nunnally, second by, uh, Ward. Let's vote. We are now in closed session. All right. Thank you. We'll wait till the people come in for more session. We have a motion. Commissioner Ward?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for approval of closed session minutes.
From May 1st, 2023.
From May 1st, 2020.
Second.
Madam Clerk, did you get the motion by Commissioner Ward? It's been seconded by Commissioner Smith, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All in favor, let it be known by voting. We now have another motion. Is there anything else before this board?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Commissioner McLawhorn that we adjourn. Second was that Commissioner Ward? All in favor, let's vote. This board stands adjourned. Thank you for your patience.